We're trying some paperwork for releasing an easement from like two and a half years ago. Because Gordy Crasian never gave it to us, so funny.
Good morning, Kit.
Good afternoon.
Okay.
Yeah, it is.
If you identify as a male's woman, we'll go with that. There is a sign-in sheet. It looks like most people didn't sign in.
Where is it?
Oh, yeah. If we could pass it around, that would be good. Because for many of you, your here being required. And we wouldn't want you to miss out on school credit for that. My name is Kit. My legal name is actually Christopher, but I go by Kit. I was six. I'm a prosecutor for Grand Travers County, and I've been doing that for a little bit over six years. In December, I took over the deputy civil counsel responsibilities when Bob left to become a judge. And Chris Forsyth left to become a deputy county administrator. So I'm pretty new at a lot of this stuff. But luckily, I've had a lot of help from Bob and Chris with notes and then with their time and just being generous and answering questions that I have as they come up. That's who I am. I got a list of many people that would be here, not everybody. But I noticed that many people I hear from boards and committees where the county doesn't require that you actually come to one of these meetings. The focus primarily is going to be the Freedom of Information Act and the Open Meetings Act. I hope that I can keep this under two hours. But the biggest chunk of that is going to be those two, which are called the sunshine laws. They're important. And I think in the primary respect, that comes from a matter of perspective. Many of us, or many of you, not me, have jobs in the private realm, private sector. And you go to work. You get the job done. And you're responsible perhaps to yourself, your employees, maybe some partners in your business. But that's not the case when you enter the government realm. We are representatives of the public. We are doing their work for them. Because it's just simply not possible to have each member of the public take care of each matter of public business. So we're solely the representatives dealing with their things, their documents, their records. And we have to do that so that they can watch us and determine what we're doing. Unfortunately, what happens is when we are trying to do that, dealing with the public's business, you get normal people. We're all average, normal people. And we get trusted to a world where we're dealing with other people's things. These laws that you have to comply with. The bottom floor is going to bother me. The laws are difficult because they're not natural. Having to, if you're talking to two of your coworkers, but it's out of a five-member board, you just can't discuss things with them. That's unnatural. And it can be complex when you could talk to these other people on the committees and the boards. And because it's life and things just come up. You're talking to one other person on the committee, and then somebody else wants to come and join in. And you might have to say, "Sorry, we gotta, we can't do this. We're gonna have to wait till the next meeting." So it's difficult because it's unnatural, complex, and life just gets thrown in the way. And it's unfortunate in that because people get into government work because they want to help the public. People get into public service because they want to serve the public. And then all of a sudden, these laws treat us like we can't be trusted. Like we have to do things. We can't talk to our friends and committee members and coworkers, or else we'll get in trouble. It requires this training because recognition of all of that, that we are in public service. Because this is difficult, complex, and unnatural. So hopefully, what can be accomplished is to avoid some of these criminal and civil sanctions, which can be assessed against the county, and then nobody wants to be at threat of being criminally charged. And then the actions that are taken can also be invalidated. So going through this training, this basics, board member basics, we're not necessarily hoping that you'll become experts on the Freedom of Information Act or the Open Meetings Act. But the hope is that you can at least spot potential issues. And if something seems a little bit uncomfortable, you can say, "Okay, maybe this is okay, but we shouldn't be having this discussion," or "We should be having this discussion in person," or "We should be waiting until immediately." So not to make anybody an expert in this, but to at least recognize when there's a potential issue. The two sunshine laws that will be the focus of today. And you may have recognized the picture here. It's Star Wars. This is Tegwe. And there was your son. I thought that fit well with the focus of today. So Open Meetings Act, the Freedom of Information Act. We will also be discussing parliamentary procedure, Byzantine, sometimes rules that can seem Byzantine for governing a meeting and the matter of proceeding before a board or proceeding within a board. Very briefly, the Campaign Finance Act and how that might relate to certain things that you do on board boards. Conflict of interest law in Michigan and locally. An appointment and removal from office. Parliamentary procedure on. We'll actually go really quick. I want to take at least one break to let people walk around. Probably take that after the Freedom of Information Act material. The two sunshine laws operate on two premises. The first is that it's the public's business to begin with that we're dealing with. And second, that sunshine deters bad behavior, or at least, if not bad behavior, behavior that could reasonably be construed as bad or uncomfortable. So by doing everything, by airing the dirty laundry in public, is hopefully deterring actors like this gentleman here and disinfecting behavior. Start with the Open Meetings Act. The legislature, when it enacted this, put this lofty intention to place. So this is the purpose. This is what they are trying to accomplish, is getting all Michigan citizens the ability to watch and observe nearly all business at open meetings. We'll talk about closed sessions in a little bit, but they are actually rather rare. Most business, nearly all business, is going to be conducted in an open meeting. Courts, when they've been looking at cases that involve the Open Meetings Act, have repeatedly said that the protections of that for the public or the provisions for the public are to be broadly construed. And the exceptions, the permissible closed sessions, are to be strictly or narrowly construed. So if there's any close call, it's going to go to openness. It's going to go to, the meeting must have been conducted in the open. So tie goes to the openness. If you're ever unsure, go with conducting the business or having the discussion at an open meeting. How does it accomplish this goal? The first is that public notice must be given of that meeting. There are requirements on what type of notice. We'll go through that in a little bit. The deliberations, all deliberations must be open to the public. And the minutes from that meeting must be taken and posted so that people can find out what happened at the meeting in case they weren't there. Or if they want to challenge something that occurred, they can quickly do so. There's a four-part test or a four-step process for determining when it actually applies. First, it has to be a public body that is being regulated. If there's a meeting of that group assembled for the purpose of deliberating or the deliberation happens at that meeting, it has to be on a matter of public policy. It's not just talking about the tigers or the lions. Quorums of public groups can talk about the tigers and the lions, as long as that's not a matter of some type of business before that board. And do any exceptions or exclusions apply where that deliberation could have taken place in private. First step is the group of public body. Here we have the Grand Travers County Board of Commissioners. We have four of them here today. Welcome. Clearly, this is a public body. And from what I saw of the attendees, there's really no question with the groups that are here. The issues that have come up have been like subgroups of the Department of Natural Resources, subgroups of the Michigan High School Athletic Association. So there can be gray area on whether a body meets this definition. But as far as for today, I'm not going to go into that. It does apply to committees and subcommittees, and that's where issues most commonly result. Before 1993, the general consensus was that committees and subcommittees were not subject to the Open Meetings Act. Because generally, there's less than a quorum of the full public body. And then they also weren't making the ultimate decision. The subcommittee would come back with some type of recommendation or having taken some action, but that wasn't the final action, and bring that back to the full public body. So that was the general thought before 1993. And then 1993, Booth versus Ned, University of Michigan Board of Regents was decided. In that case, they'd been seeking to hire, hire an official. And they had divided the Regents into several different subcommittees to interview the applicants. And then the subcommittees were excluding these applicants, saying, "You know what? You're not good enough." And then eventually, the committees got together among themselves and decided on one person. Then they go back to the full board and make that a public meeting and say, "Okay, we reached our decision. The job is going to John Smith." And then that was the only meeting conducted in public. So it was kind of a perfect storm for getting rid of the standard practice of not having committees do their business at open meetings. So in that case, the court appeals decided that that was actually the exercise of governmental function. So committees and subcommittees now are clearly under the governance of the Open Meetings Act unless they are purely advisory in nature, and we'll go into that right now. So the reason that that occurs is because of this bottom clause that they, if the subcommittee is empowered to exercise or perform a governmental or proprietary function. So if that committee has the power to do something that seems governmental or proprietary, then they're going to be subject to the Open Meetings Act. And in the Board of Regents case, and then really the question facing most committees, is are they narrowing the options? Or are they just digesting the material and taking back a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners? Recommend they, or the full public bodies. So there's nothing wrong with having these advisory committees. They don't necessarily need to be subject to the Open Meetings Act. But they need to be very, very careful that they are not taking any options off the table. And they are only narrowing the, or they are not narrowing the options and only coming up with advice or recommendations. Interviews for employment are generally required to be at an open meeting. This is a Record Eagle article from Frankfurt where they hired a police chief purely during closed meetings. But the reason I brought this up is that executives are not public bodies. A single person is not a public body. So if you have an administrator that's making the hiring, firing decisions or narrowing options, that's not necessarily something that's going to come under the Verbiage Open Meetings Act. The second part of this four-part test is whether there's actually a meeting, something that qualifies as a meeting. Obviously, this right here would. You've got people discussing to each other. You've got a presentation going on, presumably about some matter before this board. The definition of a meeting is a convening of a public body where a quorum is present for the purpose of deliberating or rendering a decision on public policy. So something that is public business before that board, where there is a sufficient number of people to reach a decision, trying to reach a decision. That's what a meeting is. One of those legal things where it takes 20 words to tell us what we all know. The elements of a meeting are a quorum, deliberation towards or rendering of a decision on a matter of public policy. Each of those can be broken down further. Robert's Rules, which we'll talk about later, says that a quorum is the minimum number of members who must be present for business to be validly transacted. In case law, it's really talking about majority. Because the majority is what is going to be required in order to get something done. So if you have a majority of people. So a quorum, so if you have a subcommittee of, say, three people out of the full public body of seven, a quorum of that subcommittee is going to be two. A quorum does not necessarily mean the full public body. That can apply whether it's just members of the public body or the subcommittee could have members that are not part of the public body. If there are two commissioners and then a public representative, as long as there are two of that three, that's going to be a quorum. One of the largest issues that comes up with the Open Meetings Act are what's called round robin discussions or constructive quorums. In this case, Booth versus Wyoming, their lawyer actually got them in trouble. And what he had done is he'd gone to lunch with two different groups of the city council consecutive days. It was a group of seven, and he'd gone to lunch with three one day and three the next day, so in total six. But in neither day had he actually gone to lunch with a quorum. And they'd reached a decision on a matter before the board. And that was found to be a meeting because there had been quorum constructed. The six of them had gotten the same information, and they deliberated together, even though they hadn't been all together at the same time. That's a common issue that comes up. There's a, this is a Grand Travers County Road Commission case where they decided to fire their attorneys. And it was a five-member body. And one of the commissioners had spoken with one other person on one occasion, and then later spoke with another. So three of them had been involved in this discussion, even though it was only two at the time. It turned out to be an issue. Hoff versus Smolstrup is, was interesting, actually, in these first two cases, is both of the bodies got in trouble because they were kind of fired with a lawyer. So maybe the message to that is, don't try to lie to your lawyer. At least if you do, at least if you try to come to a consensus outside of an open meeting. So the reason both of those actually came to light is because at the public meeting where they eventually reached the final decision of firing their lawyer, there was just simply no discussion. A pretty major decision was done, just, "I moved to fire the lawyer," and three people said yes. So that can always be kind of a telltale sign of a constructive quorum is constructive quorum or either or a quorum meeting outside of the open meeting when you've got a very difficult contentious decision that just gets decided too quick. It can be your red flag. Hoff versus Smolstrup. And then in St. Aubrey versus City of Michigan, it's not a lawyer that was fired, it was the city manager. And what had happened in that case is the mayor had, mayor was part of the city council, a seven-member city council, and had talked to each of the members of the city council about getting rid of the city manager. And that case stands for two things. The first is that it's okay to do a straw poll. You are allowed to ask other members how they plan to vote on a specific issue. But you can't try to persuade. You can't ask why. You can't give them your reasons. Can't tell them how other people are planning to vote. But somebody can take a straw poll to get an idea of interest on the issue, for example. Then also in St. Aubrey, what happened after the mayor found out there was unanimous willingness to fire the city manager, the group actually went to the city manager outside of an open meeting and said, "You need to resign and be fired." And so that was actually a violation of the Open Meetings Act. Doing that outside of an open meeting, saying, "Resign and be fired," and going there together to do so, was a violation of the Open Meetings Act. That's a common potential issue is the constructive quorum, round robin discussions. And like I mentioned at the beginning, it can happen totally without intent to violate the law. You've got a five-person board, and you just happen to see two other people that are on that board that maybe you're friends with, can't be discussing the public business. Open Meetings Act not just, doesn't just apply to what we would consider meetings, and that's the importance of legal ease in those definitions. Because it applies also to all meetings, decisions, and deliberations that are taking place between a quorum of the public body. The law requires that all those deliberations take place at the open meeting with the public's ability to observe. What does deliberations mean? I apologize for this animation. It's really a public meeting. So it's discussions, discussions with administrators. So having some type of department head come in and talk to you is deliberation, even though you're not reaching a decision, even if you don't ask questions of that administrator. If you come and, if you ask somebody to come and talk to you about a matter facing the board, that information gathering counts as deliberation. That's what the law says. So one issue that we'll talk about in a little bit concerns trainings and conferences. And that's been a gray area that is getting people into trouble when they try to title something a training or a conference, but really they're information gathering on something that's before that board. Something certainly to be very cautious of. Deliberations on a matter of public policy. So it's not social or chance gathering where you happen to see your other commissioners or board members out at inner bus or somewhere else where you happen to just be discussing your friendship, your families, things like that. That would not be a violation of the Open Meetings Act. And it's not a conference. So the definition of what a conference is, is that there are issues being discussed which are broader than those facing that public body. So this would be an example of what we're all here for today. We're talking about issues that are much broader than what Parks and Rec is facing, what the library board is facing, what the county board of commissioners is facing. Talking about issues that are broader than one particular body. So something will likely not be deemed a conference if you are only discussing something that's before the Parks and Rec board or the Board of Commissioners.
Yes, question. So you've got a five-member board, and three of you just happen to run into each other over Cracker Barrel. And a citizen spots you. How can you prove that you were not discussing any business? You were just talking about the weather.
Well, fortunately for you, it is not your burden to prove that you were not in violation. The Open Meetings Act does say that if there's a presumption that boards are following the law, and then whoever would be trying to claim that you broke the law, they would have the burden of proving more likely than not that you were discussing a matter of public policy. Now, that's probably not very comforting when you're going to try first in court public opinion. And so for that, there's not much beyond your word. Thank you. So if a group is discussing solely something facing that particular body, it's likely not going to be deemed a conference. Second, a conference is likely open to the public or other public bodies. Like today was open to the public, and it's open to many public bodies. But if you were having a discussion, you're only invited, if you wanted to title something a conference, and you've only invited members of one particular board, that's likely not going to be deemed a conference or a training seminar or something. And then third, whether there are collective discussions of issues before that board. So today, we do have a quorum of Grand Travers County Commissioners, but you can see that they're actually spread throughout the room, and they're not just sitting in one corner talking about the library while the rest of us talk about the Open Meetings Act and the Freedom of Information Act. So at something that is appropriately titled a conference, you're not going to have collective discussions among those board members or commissioners.
Kit, this is a posted open meeting, even though, isn't it?
It is. It is a posted meeting. I don't think there are any minutes being taken. And then I don't know that it was specifically noticed by, for example, the Board of Commissioners or the Parks and Rec board.
Okay. I was just wondering, you know, if that situation was to happen at an open meeting where a quorum of a group happened to deliberate some business. I mean, obviously, we try to avoid those situations, but is it technically against the OMA?
Yes. And the easiest answer is because of the minutes. Where nobody's taking minutes to it, whether they're going to be.
So if we took minutes?
Okay, if we took minutes, and then this had been noticed on, so at the beginning of the year, the county puts out the, all the meetings of the Board of Commissioners and stuff like that. So those could have been put on that. And I think if that were to have occurred, you'd likely have discussed public business. We'll take action to it.
Okay.
I think there was another question.
I was just going to state, it's an open meeting because I'm just a citizen.
All right.
There's a citizen in the room. Y'all be careful.
Glad you're here, sir. Yeah, I'm glad that members of the public are here. And it was not my intention to have any sort of actions take place today. But that was something I wanted to answer because I certainly wouldn't want anybody to help him. So, and then the fourth part of that test is wondering whether any exceptions or exclusions apply. So if there was a quorum delivering public business outside of an open meeting, was there a permissible reason for that? Like fitting in with what courts have said about the protections being broadly construed and the exceptions being narrowly construed, it's very clear that a closed meeting can only be called if there is a specific legal reason to call that, call that closed session. Now, there is, you can't just go into closed session because we want to discuss something. Because we want to discuss this really embarrassing decision we made. That can't happen. It has to be specifically given by a statute for you to go into a closed session. There are six reasons that are realistically going to be applicable to boards. There are additional, such as the partisan caucuses in the state legislature. They've given themselves that ability to put on anybody else. And then the Department of Commerce has various exceptions, too. So the six realistic reasons that you should be aware of are considering the purchase or lease of real property, consulting with your attorney, but you need to state on the record the specific pending litigation that you're going into closed session to discuss. So all these words are straight out of the law, and they all do matter very much. Has to be specific. You'd have to specify. You have to give a specific case. It has to be pending litigation, so you actually have to have been sued, and it can't have been settled yet. And there has, you have to put on the record that discussing that specific pending litigation would have a detrimental financial effect on you if you were to discuss it during an open meeting, which is going to generally be the case. If you're talking about, "How much are we going to settle this case for?" You don't want your opponent to know that. So generally, that's going to be not something to be concerned with. The more concerning part is specifying the exact pending litigation. In our cases, it would say it can be something that hasn't come yet or something that's already been resolved. And for these reasons, the, these first four, two-thirds vote is required on the record. The other two is not. But also, if requested by the applicant to talk about the contents of the application, it's not the actual interview, but it's just discussing the contents of that person's application for employment. Plenty of cases have occurred where the applicant does not want that to happen in a closed session. They should say, "Let it happen in an open meeting." And that's the applicant's call. It's not the board's call.
Kit, if the two-thirds vote fails, can, does the applicant, can they not discuss the applicant?
They can discuss the contents of the application.
If it was requested?
Yes.
Okay.
So if requested, but no two-thirds vote. So if requested and no two-thirds vote is obtained, then the interview would still take place in the public, but the contents of the application would be discussed.
Okay.
And a common one is considering material exempt from discussion by statute. Attorney-client frivolous memorandums are going to fit in this. The law exempts that from disclosure, but one thing to keep in mind is you do need an actual written opinion from that attorney. You can't just say, we'd like to go into closed session to have a discussion with our attorney. You're discussing an actual memorandum from that attorney. Yes?
The attorney does not have to be there?
The attorney does need to be there. Where a two-thirds vote is not required, these two, the majority vote is still required. Considering dismissal or other adverse action against a public officer, if they request it. Not that long ago in Grand Charters County, when the administrator was let go, he actually did not want it to take place in a closed session. So that discussion also takes place in an open session. And collective bargaining strategy, either side requests that, so that can be either the employees or the employer.
Is the individual or party kind of warned of this ahead of time? Or is it on, the impetus on them to make these moves themselves? Or are they informed ahead of time that you have these rights to request this to be put into closed session?
I don't know, so it's not, it's not like a courtroom where there's a requirement that they're informed of their rights.
Okay.
If they got an attorney, hopefully that attorney would advise them of their rights under the law.
So it's not the impetus of the board to have to inform them ahead of...
The board could, because if the board wanted to go into a closed session, they'd need the consent of that individual. Question?
That would be noticed on the agenda though, wouldn't it?
If the board planned to go into a closed session, it would be noticed on the agenda. But if the board wasn't planning on it or if they simply didn't know, then it might not be. And the board could do it regardless of whether it was on the agenda too. Rules for closed session, this first one probably is the most important to keep in mind. And you need to be quite vigilant, once you're behind those closed doors, that you're only talking about the reasons that you're behind those closed doors. And there's likely nobody there that's going to police you, policing yourselves. That's where the intent of the Open Meetings Act comes into play and just being a public servant self, not going beyond the purpose to provide you with an enter-in closed session. The decisions must be made actually at an open meeting, you have to come back out for the final decision, which creates the conundrum or quandary of, well, how do we know we're done in a closed session? If we don't know whether we're going to be able to take a vote when we go back into open session. So the advice of my predecessors, that seems proper to me, is that some preliminary decision making is allowed. And the way I've heard it describe, or come up during that closed session is, are we all set? Does anybody wish to discuss this more? Not go around the room and say, what's your vote? But try and grasp whether everybody has reached a decision, so when you go back out into the open meeting, you can, you can take a vote. Are we going to accept the recommendation of our attorney? And then do not disclose what occurred, that would also be a violation of the Open Meetings Act. Penalties and sanctions are not done. But it would be a violation of the Open Meetings Act to disclose what occurred during the closed session. The procedure for calling that closed meeting, if a two-thirds vote is required, it will be two-thirds of those serving, elected and serving, or appointed and serving, not who's present. There's a big difference there, because sometimes you have people that are absent or a majority vote for the ones where a two-thirds vote is not required. Motioned votes must be made during an open meeting. Must specifically state on the record why you are going into a closed session. And that will end up in the minutes, so that anybody wanting to challenge that decision to go into a closed session can be directly referred to why you went into a closed session. For our, for the Grand Charters County agendas, the full language is spelled out. Pursuant to MCL 15.26A, we are going into a closed session to discuss a writ confidential memorandum from attorney blank on case blank. That's the way it should be, so that people can understand why you went into a closed session to discuss public business of your public. Who may attend to those closed sessions, just about anybody. Members of the board must be allowed in. Clerk or deputy clerk, whoever's keeping the minutes, must be allowed in, so the minutes can be kept inside the closed session. And then a majority vote should be used, there shouldn't be an individual decision for situations where there's a disagreement on who actually should go in. Regularly your attorney is going to be going in if you're discussing a litigation, if you're discussing collective bargaining, or if you're discussing a memorandum from that attorney. Minutes of a closed session are kept, a clerk or deputy clerk is keeping track of those. They're kept separate and confidential, they must be kept for at least a year and a day in case somebody sues, then the judge can review that and determine that, and then they will only be disclosed if the judge orders them to be disclosed. When does it apply? Four-part test here. It's all information gathering, all discussion, all deliberation, all decision making, not just the formal gathering that's taking place in your conference room. When there are enough people to make a decision, or, it's the constructive quorum, the round robin discussion, or they're communicating with enough to make a decision when that meeting comes on something that the public body has authority on, and there's no exception. Those are, that's the four-part look, is, is there any sort of deliberation or discussion going on by enough people to make a decision on something that is public, public business, and there's no exception. The OMA also has several other requirements, several other protections, more rights for the public. They have the opportunity to attend that meeting.
Kit, I had a question on closed sessions. Say, last year the Board of Commissioners had a closed session on an ongoing issue. This year they're no longer board members, we have five members, new out of seven. Are they forbidden from speaking about that, what happened in that closed session with the new board members?
Good question. So, I believe there's a case where a county clerk disclosed what happened during the closed session and the Court of Appeals said that it did not apply to her because she was not regulated by the Open Meetings Act. The Open Meetings Act applies to the public body and the clerk is not part of the public body that's elected or appointed official, uh, that's part of the public body. I would think that because they were commissioners at the time, they're probably still regulated by the Open Meetings Act.
So they could talk to the current board members about a past closed session?
That would be my thought. So if it's, so if that issue that caused the original closed session was still ongoing, which is why the current commissioner would want to know, for some reason it's relevant to the current commissioner. If it's still ongoing, pending litigation, for example, there could be a new closed session and the former board could invite it.
Okay.
That would be completely appropriate to invite former board members into the closed session.
So they would be able to discuss past closed sessions at a current closed session?
Yeah, that seems right to me.
Okay.
Because it's not in an open meeting, so the closed sessions are out of an open meeting. Public has the opportunity to attend, and there is really no wait room in this, it says all persons shall be permitted to attend any meeting, and that all does matter. I'm just going to walk around by the letters, but the two exceptions are a closed meeting or when that person commits an actual breach of the peace at the meeting. That's the only time somebody can be kicked out of that meeting, ejected by a phone, from that meeting. So all persons, important in that it really means all. So if you have too many people show up to a meeting, you can't just cancel. There's no exception from, we didn't get a big enough vote for, we didn't plan well enough in advance for this. It is all persons, that is not discretionary, that is mandatory, all persons shall be permitted to attend. An actual breach of the peace must occur at the meeting, is there a point?
I mean, what would happen if 200 people showed up for a public meeting? If we had called, would not given us prior notice that this group of 200 people were going to show up? Obviously we don't have accommodations for 200 people.
To adjourn the meeting. Yep, and practically most of the time you're going to know when 200 people will show up because of the board animals. Again, you would have to, for some reason. And then if you, you can imagine the situation where people are doing that just to mess with the public body's ability to do business. And in that case, you'd probably just start after going to the civic center for your public meetings, and if they show up, they show up. I don't want to interrupt, so you'd have to adjourn. This actual breach of the peace must occur at the meeting, not just somebody who's committed a breach of the peace at a prior meeting. People have the right to attend to the next meeting even if they were a breach of the peace at the last meeting. And there are things that could come in the way, like they're charged currently and there's a bond condition or something. But generally, it must occur at the meeting, that's the only time the public body is going to be able to eject somebody from the meeting. Must actually interfere with your ability to do business, can't just be rude faces. They actually have to be interfering with your ability to conduct the public's business safely. Obscene conduct or roughly crowding just one others, those are specific examples. If they're sort of nauseating in the audience of your meeting or doing, or committing some form of obscene conduct, that would be enough to get them to leave. And the physical rule should be the last resort, that somebody who just keeps speaking up, it would be advised to just keep asking them to quiet down. Warn them of your intention to eject them from the meeting if they don't stop. And if they do continue to interrupt your meeting, it's really, at this point, if you're giving them warnings, you're really only going to be ejecting somebody who's there if they want to obstruct your ability. It's not going to be a person who's upset about something, it's going to be somebody who's there really with the purpose of obstructing your ability to do business. General rules for the Open Meetings Act, you may not exclude members, even if you run out of space. In that case, you return the meeting. Lawrence versus Grand Charters County was a few years ago, and that was a running out of time concern. Every member of the public has the right to address the public body on a matter of public concern. And in Lawrence, there were many, many, many people that showed up, and because of concerns, they all used their three minutes pursuant to the board rules. The board would have been there all night. So what the chair did is decided to limit the public comment section to 15 minutes. And the board was sued, eventually it settled, because it was quite clearly a violation of the Open Meetings Act. Slides are not in the greatest order, but another general rule is that public notice must be given. Public meetings shall not be held unless the notice has been given. For the regular meetings and special meetings, there are several different components to this notice requirement. At the beginning of the year, and then if there are changes, and then if there are special meetings. There also can be emergency meetings. There's an imminent threat to public health, and you have less than 18 hours to hold an emergency meeting. I didn't, I chose not to describe that because it's, like, we're critical. Minutes must be kept from the meeting. Closed minutes must be posted eight days after, and then the final minutes must be posted five days after they're approved. There are sometimes discussions of what should actually be in the minutes. The general rule is that there should be reflect what was done, actions that were taken, resolutions that were approved, things of that nature, not verbatim quotes or verbatim proceedings or the minutes, but what happened in each minute. So the language of motions, it'd be advisable to have more detail if litigation is more foreseeable on some particular issue. More detail is generally better as long as it's not so detailed that it's getting inaccurate. Violations and penalties. First, an action can be invalidated if it was, if it took place in violation of the Open Meetings Act. There are some situations where the violative action can be reenacted, you can just redo what was done improperly. This does several things. It somewhat fixes the problem, shows that you're trying to do the right thing, which can have good benefits. So this only takes place, or is only allowed where an action has been initiated to invalidate a decision. So if the board has been sued, you can reenact a disputed decision, and that does several things. It shows you're trying to do the right thing, first of all. But also it has the beneficial impact of you're lessening your risk from the lawsuit. Because if the suing party just wanted to know what happened outside of the public's eye, you've done that. And if they continue with their lawsuit, and they already know what happened, so you fixed the problem, they're not going to be entitled to any more attorney fees, costs, and the funding will be lower. So this is a good idea, this is a nice thing that the legislature gave public bodies the ability to do. Just to reenact a disputed decision, fix the problem, and that way lessen your liability from a court judgment. The lawsuit has to happen quick, that's one of the reasons that the minutes have to be posted so quick, is because the litigation has to take place so quick. Sixty days of the approved minutes, which is incredibly quick. For most legal lawsuits, it's six years, they have to be brought, lawsuits have to be brought. Willful violations of the law can get actual damages for a lawsuit. Attorney fees for bringing the suit, which is a big incentive to comply with the law because that can get very high very quickly, attorney fees. And there also can be criminal penalties. Oh, there it is, okay. Criminal penalties for willful violations of the law. That comes into play with the closed meetings, disclosing what happened at closed meetings, and also willful violations of open meetings. Gathering people together because you just simply don't want to do business in public. If that's the reason for having the meeting outside of the public's eye or disclosing what happened at a closed session, because you simply don't like the law. That would be a willful violation and there are criminal penalties for that. Second, big...
Can I ask one question before we move on?
Yes, sir, and I, I'm being mindful of people's time, that's why I'm trying to go so quick.
I appreciate it.
But also I recognize I'm going very fast.
Many times in a township election, there are one party on the ballot, so the primary election is it. So from August until November 20th, you could have a majority of the board who has not been sworn in yet. You have four or five of them sit down and talk about what they want to do in the next four years. Is that a violation?
No, no, I do not believe it would be, because at that point they're not a public body. They're not empowered to perform any government or proprietary function.
Alright.
It, it was a few slides back, but it was, a public body is a group of people that's empowered by statute or some other form of authority to exercise a governing or proprietary function. And because they haven't been sworn in, they're not empowered to do it. Thank you very much.
This may be the time to ask a question I posed you this morning. You've got a board of seven, a committee meeting is posted, three members show up, one or more additional trustees show up in the audience, and all they talk about is committee business. Is that in compliance with the act?
I believe it would be.
Thank you.
Question about the minutes for an open meeting. Is there anything about what from the public comment has to be recorded in the public minutes?
There is no requirement on that.
Okay.
What I would recommend is a clear statement that public comment was taken. But I don't know of any reason why the names and the topic of what the public comment to discuss would need to be in there.
Okay.
But for mitigating liabilities, saying we did take public comment.
There's a section.
Everybody who wanted to talk, had a chance to talk.
Okay, thank you.
I got a question, maybe, I don't know if it's covered in this section or not. It's in terms of, since we're going to be talking about documents, PR information. Someplace near you can discuss record retentions. What, question I would have is, what obligation do I have? If I create an email and send it to somebody, whether it be another commissioner or whoever, what obligation do I have to retain those emails if I'm using my own personal email account?
Sure. Okay, I was not planning on discussing it, it's good to know that... Sure. Okay. I was not planning on discussing it. It's good to know that you're interested, so I'm glad you brought it up. Records retention is a state schedule that the state puts out and says, and it is, but it breaks it down into each different group of the state. So there's prosecuting attorney's offices, the one I'm most familiar with. And it says prosecuting attorney's offices must keep legal memorandums forever. So if we create a legal memorandum, we have to hold on to it forever. Emails, it says we must keep for a day. So we're not supposed to delete our emails in the day that we get them. Complaints, like where we charge somebody with a crime, there's a different amount of time that we have to keep those. We charge somebody with an offense where they could go to prison throughout their life, we have to keep those, I believe that's forever as well. So these records retention schedules are put out by the state and they are very, they're universal. They discuss everything. And there actually is, to get to your question, there actually is no interplay between those and the Freedom of Information Act. So they're completely different beasts. So records retention, there's no penalty for violating the records retention schedule. It says you are supposed to keep legal memorandums forever. But if we destroyed one, we try to keep them all, but perhaps we've lost one from 1970 or something. We would be fined, sued, criminally liable. If somebody FOIA'd one of those legal memorandums and we couldn't find it, we would not be in violation of FOIA. So with your question about emails, they're totally separate. So if you delete your emails the second you get them and then somebody FOI's them, there wouldn't be a FOIA violation. Does that make sense?
No, it's fine. Good.
Yeah. So records retention says you should be keeping your emails. It's actually not very long at all. But, and so there would be a records retention violation, there would not be a FOIA violation. Did I explain that well? Did everybody understand that? Because it's important because people will come up. I've seen it a couple of times at the prosecutor's office. People say records retention for this is this, so give me all this. Sometimes we simply don't have it. Yes, ma'am?
I was just going to say, but it's important for people to realize that once they delete an email, it doesn't mean it doesn't exist. The county I know does, I know the townships do, are keep a copy of your deleted emails. You still have the ability to go and extract those.
Yes. So that part I actually did include. Because it's helpful, I delete emails. I don't save every single email. So that's, there is an important distinction there between records retention and freedom of information. They are totally separated. It shouldn't be confused. The county stores emails for about 30 days, 30 emails for about 30 days. That's pretty reliable. They have some info there. They actually also store drafts of emails. So if you have a county email, it's not just storing your deleted emails, but it's storing drafts of your deleted emails, drafts of your saved emails, drafts of your sent emails. So when we've gotten FOIAs for county employees' emails, we might have 10 drafts of the same email. So if somebody sent 30 emails, we probably have three new emails to look through. And that actually makes it rather expensive to do a Freedom of Information Act request for emails. As a couple of people have found out, and I think two members of the public have been pretty unhappy with their FOIA response because it's very time intensive to go through emails. So moving on to the Freedom of Information Act. Another open records law or sunshine law casting light into the sometimes dark county offices where things are sometimes hidden and buried. Sometimes, as you'll see in some of the exceptions to FOIA, sometimes they're kept private for good reason. So again, this is the law. The intent expressed by the state that all persons have access to full and complete information about the workings of their government. Just like with the Open Meetings Act, we are holding on to these documents. We are doing this business for them. If you're in ancient Greece with a direct democracy, they might be individually doing all of it themselves. They might be having their open meetings because of the every single person. So there'd be no purpose for an Open Meetings Act, but as our society's gotten bigger, we need to have representatives and delegates who deal with the business of government and meetings and through documents. But these documents are the property of the public and we simply hold on to them and have access to them. Just like with the Open Meetings Act, it is broadly construed, pro-disclosure statute. Unless there is a specific exception, every record is going to go out into the public or can go out to the public. Give it out. A public record, what must be disclosed, public records must be disclosed in the means of writing, which is any of these verbs, prepared, own used, possessed, contained, in the performance of an official function. This definition of writing is broad. It's pretty much anything that's tangible. It includes hard drives and discs, microfilm, thumb drives, flash drives, documents, pictures, symbols. That includes, I can include the source code, the ones and zeros. That can include that as well. Unless there's an exception, that writing is broad and this public document that must be given out to the requester. So there's the definition. I have a couple of examples up here that we'll go through. So a public document is a writing that is prepared, own used, possessed, retained by the public body in the performance of an official function. So your personal emails or texts using your government phone or email address. There is a case on this and it is not a public document because it is not being used in the performance of an official function. It's being used in the performance of a personal function. It's just the form you happen to be using or the email that you happen to have. Same with work computers. Using them for personal business may be a violation of some work policy, but it's not going to make your texts to your spouse subject to Freedom of Information Act. Unshared handwritten notes from a meeting, there was a case on this as well. Those were not being used in the performance of an official function because they were solely personal notes being kept by a board member. The board member was taking notes during the meeting so that they could refer to them later or refer to them when they were actually discussing the topic. If they were shared, that would be different. If they were shared, then they'd be being used, they'd be used in the performance of an official function. Work emails on a personal email address, this actually hasn't been definitively decided, but in my opinion, they would be subject to FOIA. What, how the requester would know that you actually had them would be a good question. But I know there was a situation in the city, February 20th, for the last 10 years, where a attendee of a meeting observed a public official who was also in the audience sending an email to some people that were actually deliberating. And then there was a FOIA for that. I don't know what email it was sent from, but it would be used by the public body. Even if it was from a personal email, still being used by the public body to deliberate on a matter of public concern. So in my opinion, this hasn't been decided definitively, but in my opinion, it fits within the definition of a public document.
Excuse me, you said that would be within?
I believe so. I believe that would be something that should be disclosed if there are FOIA requests for it.
Okay, but just came back to if on your own personal computer, on your own personal email system, which you have Gmail, let's get specific on it. I realize they keep that stuff forever. But if I don't have it available to me, I deleted it, I can't go and retrieve it. I don't know I have it for sure. So that would be, the onus would then be on somebody else to petition Google or Yahoo to do all that work. That's not, the onus wouldn't be on me.
Correct.
To see if some, at some point in time, six months ago, there was something I deleted.
That's correct. You only have access to what you have access to. There isn't even the onus on the county to retain deleted emails. So. If the, if the public document does not exist, and it does not exist in any form that we have access to, we don't have it. So we're not possessing it, using it, retaining it, or storing it. So we don't have to dispose of it. I think we just simply don't have it. So if you deleted it and you don't have access to Google's cache, which you don't, then it simply don't have it.
Kit, I think it's important to differentiate. FOIA and the Open Meetings Act are separate. They, you know, they work together as the sunshine laws, but the example you gave was someone sending an email to an elected official during an open meeting. That is subject to FOIA, not by virtue of it being an open meeting, but by FOIA. Doesn't matter when you sent it to him. If you sent it to him in the course of his duties, has to do with his office, it's FOIable.
Yes. Well, actually going into a little more detail with that one, it was pretty interesting. There was a Record Eagle article about it. There is, it's a pending question. It's an unknown, there's an unknown answer of whether that was a violation of the Open Meetings Act. It was very clear that the email had to be disclosed. It was sent to two, I think it was a planning commission, a city planning commission, members during a meeting. And it was very clearly subject to FOIA because they had it on their work email addresses, at least one of those three. And so there was a FOIA for that email and it was very clear that they had to turn it over. Another undecided question is whether emails between board members during a meeting would violate the Open Meetings Act. That would not be good because that's a deliberation that's taking place on your computer and the public can't hear it. So yes, they are separate. Things could certainly violate both, but they are very different.
Could you also address receiving notes during an open meeting? Like I got a text message during the last open meeting from a member of the airport commission saying, "I don't mind if my information's on the county website." You know. That shouldn't be part of the meeting because it's not something that's open to everyone. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, and I assume you were the only one that got that?
Yeah.
What would be a problem is if suddenly this airport commission person texts three other county commissioners. And we've got four county commissioners on a group text, or three county, four county commissioners on a group text, talking about something that the board is discussing at that point. That would be an Open Meetings Act violation in my opinion.
Okay.
A last example, private businesses surveillance videos which are collected by the police would be a public record because they're being used in the possession of the police. They've been used by the police. They go to the prosecutor's office eventually. So they're in possession of at least one part of that public body. General provisions of the Open Meetings Act, of Freedom of Information Act, if you may not get confused. All requests are required to be in writing. Your Freedom of Information Act coordinator can respond to verbal requests, but there's no obligation to respond to those verbal requests. Public body must have a FOIA coordinator. That's the person who is the point person for FOIA requests. Just. For the county, there are three. For the sheriff's department, the sheriff's department coordinates their own FOIA requests. The health department's the same. And then for everybody else, it's the prosecuting attorney's office. A fee may be charged, but the law does require that the public body have a FOIA coordinator. That's who the person, the requester can contact if they have questions. And then if there's no coordinator, if there's no published procedures, then the public body can't bill for anything. So you have to comply with the law before you can bill. A fee may be charged for various purposes, but it's quite limited. Collection of print, separating exempt material from mailing. That fee has to be reasonable and the law says that it has, you have to charge at the hourly rate of the lowest paid qualified person to do it. In our office, we charge for the lowest paid person in the prosecuting attorney's office. Our office has been designated as the FOIA coordinator. So the rate that we charge is for the lowest paid person in the office. There's quite a bit of work that needs to be gone through to charge somebody. And the law is also very hesitant about charging somebody for what it calls minimal requests or requests you can quickly respond to. So in our office, we never charge for less than half an hour of work. I don't think we could collect money if we charged for less than half an hour of work, which is most cases. We'll get a request for a police report, we'll do redactions, and then we'll send out the questions quickly.
So Kit, that hourly rate or whatever it is that you charge, that covers everything, the printing, everything that goes into the process of responding to the FOIA request?
You charge 10 cents per page.
Okay.
Yep. You can charge 10 cents per page for printing. The biggest, in the cases where we've sent out a request for the person to pay, has been because of large amounts of time needed for collection and separating exempt material. So the two that I've dealt with so far have both been for emails. There was one person that requested one county commissioner's emails. And then there was a request for all county commissioner emails on a particular topic. And like I said, if they sent out 30 emails, there might be 300 stored emails that I would need to go through. And in those requests, they requested all emails. And because FOIA, it's to be construed broadly, that means all emails. That means all saved drafts. That's all deleted emails. And when they say all emails on a particular topic, it was about the county's invocation policy. Our system does have the opportunity to do keyword searches, but, so I could put in invocation. But if a commissioner misspelled invocation, then I wouldn't get that. And that would be a violation of FOIA because they didn't, what was all words, all emails that say invocation. They said all emails relating to invocation policy. So it's a very time intensive process to actually collect what they were requesting. And then separating exempt material, we'll talk about the exceptions from FOIA. But the most common one is information of a personal nature, disclosure of which would be a clearly unwarranted invasion of privacy. And the law has said that that's like your email address, your personal address, height, weight, things like that. So when somebody sends an email to a commissioner and they say, "Hi Commissioner Henshaw, my name is blank. I live at blank." We have to go through all those emails and redact their address because they probably wouldn't want that getting out there. "My name's blank and I think prayer is the greatest thing in the world, but I think prayer is the worst."
What is the requirement on specificity? I mean, so if somebody isn't just doing a fishing expedition?
A couple of responses. First, if they're doing a fishing expedition, it's going to take a long time to figure out what they're actually requesting and you can charge for that. To collect and separate. And so with both of those email requests, the, what the law allows for is you can send a good faith request for up to 50% as a deposit. And in both of those cases, they've refused to pay the deposit, so we haven't actually sent out the records because they're not willing to pay us for our client. So that's the first response, is that they're probably not going to want to pay if they send you a vague request. The request does have to be specific enough to give us notice of what they're looking for. And say it's so vague that we just can't figure out what they want, we can deny that request and in our denial, the law requires that we certify that the record is not found under the name given to us of the record or any, any name reasonably known to us. So if they say, "I want all permits." All permits under the name, I can't help if you're talking about before, yeah, I'm sorry. But if they don't give enough specificity and so we try to find what they're looking for and we can't, then we just deny it and say, "We looked under names of documents known to us, as we gave us, or reasonably known to us." "We looked under names of documents known to us, as he gave us, or reasonably known to us, and we just didn't find it." That would be a response. Ready?
You had mentioned that you have to charge at the lowest rate of the individual that's capable of performing the search. I was a trusting county township and we went through all of this. My question, do you charge the fully burdened cost of that individual, or just the?
The fully what?
The fully burdened cost of that individual.
Oh, you mean like benefits?
Pardon me?
Do you mean benefits?
Yes.
You can charge for benefits.
Okay.
I, I think we probably could charge a little bit more than we do. Because the lowest paid person in our office is a highly competent person. But there's a reason we have, the office manager and myself are the ones, the ones that respond to the FOIA requests. And there's a reason to do that. Because of the care and knowledge and experience it takes to do these. So I think we actually could probably charge the lowest attorney rate and totally justify it because it is a complicated process. But we charge at the lowest rate of somebody in our office. Chris, you got a question?
Oh, I just wondered about charging per page also. What if they ask for thousands and thousands of pages and then they realize it's too expensive? Or maybe the act prevents it at a certain point, I don't, I don't know. Does it still consider it reasonable to charge ten cents for every page, even when it's an exorbitant amount of paper?
It does. On the standard FOIA requests, so if they follow the county's policies and procedures for FOIA requests, there's actually a form. And that says, something along those lines, of how do you want to receive this? And if they say electronic, we can't charge per page because we're not printed. But if they, if they check the box for paper, we have to print out ten thousand pages, we should be able to. When, I can't remember who I was talking to, but I was talking to somebody about the two email requests. And as I'm describing how we denied it and sent in this, we sent this request for a good faith deposit, I was sort of feeling convicted to myself, like, well, we're not trying to hide these records from anybody. But charging is a good thing because that is taxing dollars. I am a paid county employee, and if somebody is going to take up probably twenty hours of my time going through those emails and separating exempt material, the county's taxpayers shouldn't be burdened by that just because somebody's interested in material. So I, I think charging is a good thing. The law is very clear that you're not, you're not turning a profit on this. Ten cents per page is not a lot for in, in paper or collection of all of it.
Does the act obligate us to give it to them in the format they request?
If we happen to... So one, one issue that's come up is, people, requesters will request, "I would like a list of all of this." And if we don't have a list, we simply don't have a list. "I would like a PDF of blank." We don't have it in a PDF, we simply don't have it, and we are not obligated to put it into a PDF or put it into a list. Next question.
So if, if we hear one of the officials state that they have been losing money on providing FOIA requests, that's their own fault, then?
Not necessarily. So, there was one thing I mentioned. The law is very, it doesn't prohibit charging for less than thirty minutes of work, but it is not favorable to it. And most requests, thirty minutes is probably about the standard amount of time to take. So for, for our office, the standard bid request is all police reports for blank case. And we go through those and we separate, we redact whatever we need to redact. And maybe it's a little bit more than thirty minutes, but it's not much more. So filling out the form is about another fifteen minutes worth of work, so we end up not charging. So for our office, for example, it does end up being a losing proposition too. Sheriff's Department has a dedicated employee for doing FOIA requests. That's what you're talking about. And I think most of their requests are the same, where, I can't remember exactly how the law words it, but it's, it's unfavorable to charging for small amounts of work. You can only charge in fifteen minute increments, you can't charge for the fifteen minutes it takes to fill out the form. I think that, that, that would be my guess as to why that is. But it's also possible they're not billing for everything that they bill right over. I do know they bill for pages, printed copies, I do know they bill for that.
Thank you.
So there's the broad disclosure, pro-disclosure, and there's, if broadly says, must disclose all public records unless they're exempt from disclosure. And then the courts, when interpreting this, have said that the protections are to be broadly construed and the exceptions narrowly construed. There are twenty-five listed exemptions from disclosure that can be broken into four general categories. The most common is records of a personal nature that I just talked about. This is pretty much every police report, which is honestly the bulk of FOIA requests that the county gets are for police reports. And this is pretty much every police report. You're going to have a victim who probably doesn't want his or her name released to the public. Might have their height and weight in there, which people often don't want released and made publicly available. And this, I actually paraphrase this, but it's the public release of this. So the way to look at it is, if my height and weight were broadcast to the public, or printed on the front page of the Record Eagle, would I feel like that was a clearly unwarranted invasion of privacy when I simply happened to be the victim of a crime? Or when I happened to witness a crime and talk to the police about it? And to me, that's always been a pretty easy answer. Is if this was publicly broadcast on TV, on flyers, on the front page of the Record Eagle, would I feel like my privacy was unwarrantedly intruded upon? So that's, there are cases that talk about addresses of victims and witnesses that don't get released to the public. And in addition, you would feel like your privacy was invaded. Courts also look at the purpose of FOIA, which is to shed light on government action. It's not to just figure out who is a victim of crime, or who witnessed a crime. Find out where somebody lives that got a permit or something. It's to shed light on government action. Second category is related to law enforcement. A common exemption is when there's an ongoing investigation and release of information would interfere with law enforcement's ability to investigate. But there's also several exemptions listed, so like police officers' addresses, their family's names, training of a police officer, like what trainings they've been to. The layout of jail is not subject to FOIA. All sorts of things along those lines. There's a new FOIA exemption related to cybersecurity measures that we've taken. Because in theory, that's, if we have a policy on cybersecurity, that could be FOIA, and then the next group of Nigerian witnesses could figure out by having to account it. The records that are exempted on the basis of public policy, for, for some reason, the legislature has said this is better to keep secret than it would be to have public disclosure of that. So the cybersecurity would also fit into that. The layout of jail would be a good example of that. And then a fourth general category is the records that are exempted by other statutes. So some other law, there's about two hundred of them, probably a little bit more than two hundred. There is a handy list which can be searched, which is nice. These are things that people are generally familiar with as confidential, like HIPAA, FERPA, Crime Victims Rights Act. These are things that other statutes say are confidential and not subject to disclosure.
Kit, where's that listed you mentioned that is readily applicable? Is that just on Michigan?
Yes, the Michigan Municipal League and the Michigan Association of Municipal Attorneys are the ones that put it out. It's on, I think it's the MAMA's website, Michigan Association of Municipal Attorneys. And it's a sixty-some page PDF, you can search it, which is really helpful. Because there are just so many things that some statute or another says these are confidential and not subject to disclosure. But it's actually fairly uncommon that they actually come into play. Some of them are very clearly only related to one department. So for example, if somebody calls in a complaint of child abuse to the Department of Health and Human Services, and then there's a FOIA to the Department of Health and Human Services, they can redact the name of the person they called in. But that exception only applies to the Department of Health and Human Services. So as soon as the record of the child abuse investigation goes to somebody else at a police department or a prosecutor's office, that exception doesn't apply anymore. There's a lot to it, but they do come into play with enough frequency that any FOIA coordinator really should have that PDF to search it. Because there's, there's too many to know, memorize, recognize, there's just so many. All requests must be in writing, and a response must be within five days. There must be a response to the requester within five business days, doing one of the three following. Grant that request in full, or tell the person that their rec, their request is being granted in full. Let them know that their request is being denied in whole or in part, or an extension. A one-time extension can be done for up to ten business days. I'm letting the person know that they can answer after ten business days. An extension can be for basically any reason. You do have to give them a reason, but there's no legal requirement. It could just simply be, "I am too busy," or "This is not my top priority." I don't think you could be sued for any of those things. Anything can be a reason for that extension if you need it to be. And we have used as, as our justification for an extension, it's just due to our workload and time constraints, we cannot respond at the time. The law says that you have to give this response doing one of these three things, grant, deny, or issue an extension. But the law actually does not say when you have to produce. There is a difference. You have to respond within those five business days. You do not necessarily have to produce the requested documents within those five business days. If a request is denied, you have to send them a form notifying them that their request is denied. The requester must get notice of why their request is denied. So, request was denied because records are exempt from FOIA, because they are cybersecurity measures that the county recently taken, or something. If it's denied in part, such as because of redactions, you have to explain to them what was redacted, why. You don't have to say specifically, whatever, the witness's home address. Disclosure of this would be a clearly unwarranted invasion of privacy. If that request is denied, the requester has the right to an appeal, and that appeal goes directly to the FOIA coordinator. So it's, the law gives the FOIA coordinator notice that the requester is unhappy with the response. And then they have ten days to respond to that appeal, which could be, yeah, if they made a mistake, then they could fix that mistake. If they inadvertently redacted a little bit too much, they could fix that mistake and send out a proper amount. Following that appeal, the person, the requester has the right to sue. If they're successful, they get their attorney's fees and costs. Those have to be reasonable, so the judge is willing to decide what the reasonable attorney fees and costs are. There can also be a, an additional civil fine in addition to the fees and costs. If there was a, arbitrary capricious is a common legal term. It's an unreasonable exercise of discretion. So if the public body was unreasonable, or arbitrary, redacting too much, or denying something, there could be an additional, up to five hundred dollars that goes to the person suing. Next one.
If, if you deny, do they have to appeal it before they sue?
Yes. You guys get a chance to fix, which is really nice that that is in place. If you make mistakes, you have to. So then another legal standard, if the judge were to find that the denial was willful in bad faith, the public body was intentionally keeping these records from the requester, the civil fine has to be assessed. And it has to be between those two numbers. Can't be any lower than two thousand five hundred, even if it is just the smallest thing. The judge finds that it was a willful violation, and it could be, maybe they willfully redacted something in one area and inadvertently left it unredacted in another area. They were willfully trying to keep something that should have been disclosed. The fine has to be between that much for each violation.
Kit, I'm sorry, I missed, who did you say they filed the appeal with? Is it the original FOIA coordinator?
Yep, with the same person that did the denial, same public body. Interestingly, so while we're talking about all of this, particularly with something like this, that's common. There's commonly going to be records of a personal nature that are held by a public body. They can be very confidential, very private records. So redacting or otherwise not disclosing, it's important, serious and should be done. But it's a very, also very important to remember that this is a pro-disclosure statute. And secondly, so there are all these potential violations, or potential liability for the county if something was held back that should have been disclosed. There is absolutely no liability on, on the public body if you disclose too much. So you might give out something that really invades somebody's privacy, but they, they can't sue the county. There's no like, "You should have held this back under FOIA," and they can't sue under FOIA. There might be other viol, there might be other ramifications, like if you violate HIPAA, you might lose your access to some records. You violate FERPA, you might lose some federal funding. But for example, if you left a witness's address in a police report, and they feel like their privacy was really violated, there's not gonna be any liability for the county. So, important to be really careful with that stuff. But it is a pro-disclosure statute, and there's no penalty for giving out too much. I think this is a good time to take a break. Those are the two biggest chunks of what I had to talk about. I think this was originally noticed as a two-plus meeting, which generally means two, or at a lot of trainings, that means an hour and forty-five. It's going to go along, or past two hours, but we are more than half done, and I'll try to move quicker. So parliamentary procedure, just the standard rules for any board. Any board is going to have rules for the manner of proceeding before that board, just how they govern themselves. The general principles is, there's purpose to them, and in my mind, it's to make things proceed efficiently, orderly, uniform, in a predictable way. So that if you're going to a meeting, and you've been going to meetings for two years, you know, well, there's going to be motions made, maybe they may be amended, but you can actually have a guideline of how to make a motion, or how to amend a motion, what, how a motion gets voted or voted down. So in my mind, that's the purpose. That's pretty well reflects what Robert's Rules says about the purpose of rules of parliamentary procedure. The rules that are adopted by any board, the bylaws for incorporation of Robert's Rules, come last in this order of precedence. The first in governing law around here is always the U.S. and Michigan constitutions. Nothing that any board can do, any government action can do is cannot violate the Constitution, cannot violate a state statute, and state statutes can't violate the Constitution. And then after that are going to be the procedural methods you have, such as a board's bylaws, and then beyond that, anything they incorporate, such as Robert's Rules, which is a pretty standard one to incorporate.
When you say foundational document, you're not meaning the foundation of the board or entity, you're saying the foundation of Robert's Rules?
Yes. Using Robert's Rules as like a foundation for things that are beyond the bylaws, beyond statutes, beyond the Constitution. So that's the Trump order, got my UCR hand there. General principles is that you're only going to be discussing one thing at a time. Things are supposed to be orderly, and people need to be able to follow along. So that's a general principle, is only going to have one thing, only one person's talking. It's important for the clerk to be able to keep minutes, you need only one person talking, not people talking over each other. Generally going to have full debate unless some rule is prohibiting it, and the issue and not the person. So you're not talking to a person, saying, "This person said this, and I disagree," is generally you're talking about an issue. Keeps things more impersonal, can hopefully keep things more civil, and generally directed towards the chairperson, which is something that I'm talking about later. So those are general principles, to keep things orderly and civil, and one person at a time, only talking about one thing at a time. These are all out of Robert's Rules as well. Full debate and... The... This General Henry Robert, and he wrote Robert's Rules, it's been updated since he wrote it. And what it says is talking about the purpose of having procedural rules and guidelines. It's not so that the smartest kid in the classroom gets to rule everything. It's not so whoever studies hardest can trick everybody else. Despite it being a thick book, full of many technical points, that's not really the purpose. The purpose of all those technical points and rules and procedures is for things to be uniform and orderly and efficient. It's not so that people can be defrauded, and you can trick people, and make sure that they are shut out of debate. They're designed to help and not hinder. So that's the general purpose for having these rules, not to have technicalities. The question often comes up of what happens if there's a violation of one of these rules? If a person's debate gets cut off too short, or if somebody's not given a second chance to debate? If a motion to reconsider is done at the wrong time, or by the wrong person, and somehow something gets passed through, the question arises, well, what happens? Is that action ineffective? Do we actually, do we have to... Does that motion carry the weight that we thought it did? And courts have, across country, but also in Michigan, have distinguished between procedural and substantive violations. So if you violate a rule of procedure, as far as did we title the motion correctly? Or did somebody only get eight minutes instead of ten minutes? That's a procedural violation, not substantive. A substantive violation would be the minority members were not allowed into the room when we had the opening. That'd be a substantive violation. Or we passed a motion even though only two out of seven people voted in favor, and we said the motion passed. Those are substantive violations versus procedural. Procedural rules lack the force of law, do not create a clear legal right that's enforceable in court. So if there's a violation of a procedural rule, it doesn't make the board action ineffective, and it doesn't give an aggrieved person the right to sue. An important distinction, and generally it's going to be pretty easy to figure out how to administer whether something's procedural versus substantive. The law says that boards speak through majority action. So if you think you pass a resolution even though only two out of seven voted in favor, that would be a substantive problem, not procedural. So unless it's in violation of a state or federal law, some type of charter, which actually do have the effect of law, ordinances do have the effect of law, but bylaws and Robert's Rule do not have the effect of law, so they would not... A violation of bylaws or Robert's Rules would not invalidate the board action. There are several different officers that each board is going to have. The one who would be the chair has several duties that are listed either in bylaws or in incorporated foundational or base, baseline documents. Duties of the chair are generally to open the meeting, calling the meeting to order. One thing that comes up is chairs do not inherently have any more power. They can be given more power than other members of the board, but there's no, their votes don't count points or anything like that. Announcing, keeping things running orderly and efficiently, recognize members who are entitled to come up and speak at a podium, or people who are going to be making motions, and making sure each person is given the chance to speak, given the chance to speak twice, once everybody wanted to speak. First time, all sorts of procedural guidelines during the meeting. Stating the motions and putting those questions to vote, announcing the result, protecting the board from being inefficient by people just raising, what dilatory motions, what need... Protecting the board from being inefficient by people just raising, called dilatory motions, but needless, unreasonable, wasteful motions. By refusing to recognize that that motion is even made. Enforcing the rules related to debate, as far as the time, and order, and orders of preference. Expediting business the way they can. So it's, it's running the meeting. The chair of the board runs the meeting, but does not inherently have any more authority or voice per se. Other officers that go recognize the meetings, vice chairs are generally elected to take those responsibilities when the chair's gone. Secretary, the person who is responsible for keeping the meeting minutes, and at least for the county proposing the meetings. Treasurer and ex officio member, several boards will be using an ex officio member, someone whose work is intimately related to that board. I think with Brownfield, the treasurer is actually an ex officio member, and I believe also their secretary. So those are several different offices that you recognize as part of meetings.
I want to define ex officio.
From the office.
By virtue of the office, is it my?
There we go. Meeting must have a quorum. It's the number of members who must be present in order to get something done. If you don't have enough people there to get something done, you don't have a meeting. If you don't have a quorum, you can just sit around and chat about public business. But you don't have anything, you don't have enough people to get you need to meet on. That's determined by the, the number of people actually elected and serving. Not whether, if somebody steps out for a bathroom break, you don't lose your quorum. You can still continue debate, because you don't have a quorum voting. The president, they will be voting. Typically, a quorum is a majority, that's because you need them in order to do your thing. I'll go through, a motion can seem like a Byzantine procedure, can seem like a really hot procedure, and unnecessarily formulaic. But it's to make sure things are done uniformly and orderly. So if somebody makes a motion. But the motion generally needs to be seconded. There are some motions that don't need to be seconded, but generally, a motion needs to be seconded. The question is stated by the chair, or put by the chair, so that everybody knows specifically what they will be debating and voting on. If debate is permitted, then that question will be debated. A vote will be taken, and then the chair announces the result of the vote. Whether it passes or fails, and exactly what that motion was, again, so that people are clear on what just happened. Those steps in detail, pretty standard. Way of phrasing would be, "I move that we accept the recommendation of staff," or something along those lines. "I move to approve the minutes." "I move to adopt," blank. Second the motion, by just saying, "Second," or "I second." Question is then stated by, to give the people, give the board members, precise understanding of what is going to be debated and then voted upon. There are rules, they can be spelled out in your bylaws or in Robert's Rules, if that's what you're using, regarding the process of debate. If your board rules, your bylaws are specific on it, those are gonna be, those are going to trump Robert's Rule. But typically, the maker of the motion is entitled to speak. We don't want people talking over each other, so the chair is going to recognize who will speak next, by being directed by the chair, it's your turn to speak. People are not allowed to speak a second time until everyone who wished to speak one time has been given that opportunity. Have to be relevant to what's being discussed, and those remarks should be addressed to the chair. According to Robert's Rules, generally, each person is going to receive ten minutes to discuss that, if they wish that. If they wish to have a full ten minutes to discuss that. There are different rules, which we'll go over, to call the question, and that debate can be cut short.
Kit. Once the maker of the motion has spoken, could a chairperson, I've seen this done before, actually, but I don't know about the appropriateness of it. Could, could the chair then just start to go around the room with the rest of them? You know, sit, with the exclusion of the maker of the motion? Could the chair say, "All right, we're gonna start at this end, and everybody will get their chance to speak to this topic?"
I wouldn't see any problem with that.
Okay. And then go back around the other way the next time, or, you know?
That would be a fine way of doing it. Obviously, there, there may be more efficient ways, because just raise your hand if you want to speak, because on any given motion, there's not always.
Sometimes when it's a hot topic, you know who's gonna wanna talk.
So that would be a good, if, if it is something like that, that'd be a good way of ensuring everybody gets the chance, when anybody makes a second chance.
Right, okay, thank you.
That would be probably. After the debate, the chair puts the question, which is stating it, so that everybody understands exactly what they're voting on, to make sure nobody's confused. Sometimes motions are stated in the negative, as in, "Should we reject the proposal?" And motions should generally be stated in a positive. And the chair putting the questions, yeah, the chair putting the question is a good way to make sure that everybody understands exactly what they're voting on.
Can the chair call the end to the debate? And if so, can the board overrule that, by a majority vote?
There are a couple ways that could play out in practice. The chair could make a motion to call the question. I don't remember if I left it, if I put it in this presentation. In small groups, which I believe probably every group here is, less than twelve is generally, or Robert's Rule says is a small group. The chair is allowed to make motions. In big groups, it's recommended that chairs not make motions. But in a smaller group, the chair can make motions, and so the chair could move to call the question. And that would just be a standard motion, people would vote on whether to end debate.
Does that have to be seconded? Yes. That one does have to be seconded?
We have an audience member who says yes, and she looks confident. Ask if it's that one. You also need a two-thirds vote, so you're gonna need several people, not just seven. The chair just simply ending the debate would likely be a procedural violation of bylaws or Robert's Rules. So, for example, the bylaws of the county commissioners don't reference calling the question. So at that point, there's a board rule that says, "It was a matter of procedure, not referenced by these rules." We go to Robert's Rules, which does discuss calling the question. And if the board, if the chair just simply ended debate without moving to call the question, that will likely be a procedural violation. Does that make sense?
Okay. Doesn't that allow for like a filibuster? If the chair could never, without calling the question, the chair could never say, "We're done talking about it."
Yeah, if you don't have the two-thirds majority to call the question. Of course, one thing is, circle back, if there's a procedural violation, doesn't create a legal right to, to invalidate any action. And if the chair, for whatever reason, is unable to give people to the ten minutes, as much Robert's Rules talk about. Anybody who speaks beyond those ten minutes would be creating a procedural violation themselves. So, being unfortunate, it wouldn't be pretty, and it'd be probably quite ugly in practice. But I don't see any, anything that could happen, that would invalidate any action on what was eventually voted on.
If, if a chair senses that the rest of the board is tired of listening to somebody talk? In the past, I've just said, "If there are no further questions or comments, we'll vote." And if one person objects, and nobody else does, then you can ask, then you can ask the question, or put it to a vote.
That doesn't seem any problem.
But a lot of times, it's just as simple as saying, you know, "Well, that's enough discussion, unless there's another question or comment."
And so, say that was part of a seven-member board, you've got one person that really just doesn't want to stop talking. You would, even if you didn't move to call the question and have a two-thirds vote, it sounds like you've got six out of seven. So whether there's even really a violation is a question.
It's only a violation if somebody pushes. As long as, as long as you say, "If there are no other questions or comments, let's go."
And their remedy is, you know, a board member can't sue for a violation of the Open Meetings Act.
At some point, it could just be polite, the common sense takes over. It's finesse.
Yep, boards do need to conduct business. It's something that comes up in all sorts of alleged violations of the Open Meeting Act, of statutes, of the constitution. It's consistently recognized that boards need to get things done. So the chair puts the question, announces the result of the vote, and the effect of the vote, so the motion passes, and the judge department has fifteen thousand dollars to buy. Two-thirds majority votes are general, they're listed in several different places, but in general, they are required when stopping or limiting something. So if you're suspending a board rule, or modifying a rule of order, closing, limiting, or extending debate, closing nominations, or rescinding a previously drafted item. If you're limiting the effect of something on limiting debate on something, it's generally going to require a two-thirds majority vote, at least as far as Robert's Rules is concerned. There are many common motions that come up for boards. Generally, a member has to change their vote after the result is announced, only by unanimous consent, or a motion to reconsider, if they were voting with the prevailing side. If they were not voting with the prevailing side, they'd have to make a motion to rescind. Common motions are a motion to amend, reconsider, and rescind, which I just mentioned in a little bit more detail. Amending is changing a motion by inserting words or paragraph, deleting words or paragraph. All motions to amend must be germane, is what Robert's Rule said. Germane is generally closely related or not significantly changing the meaning of what was originally proposed. So a motion to build a new boardwalk along the board rivers by granting funds to facilities in the amount of forty-seven thousand dollars. A proper amendment would be forty-eight thousand dollars. Or moving to amend the facilities completed by X date, those would be proper motions to amend. And these are, this is going to be up to the chair, it's going to be in the discretion of the chair, whether the amendment is germane to the main motion or the original motion. But a non-germene motion might be something like, "I move to amend that original motion by hiring an outside contractor to construct the boardwalk." That would be a significant difference, whether it's going to be done in-house or held house. But again, that would be up to the chair. Friendly amendments are a common practice with boards. Those of you on boards, I'm sure are familiar with them. And they're made before the motion is stated by the chair, and the maker of the motion must agree to that amendment. They also need to be germane. But it's a way of getting around the requirement of voting on the motion to amend, and then voting on the new motion. It only requires one vote. The way this plays out in practice, with an example, somebody moves to allow facilities forty-seven thousand dollars to construct a boardwalk. And then somebody moves to amend it to say forty-nine thousand dollars. If it's not a friendly amendment, there will be a motion on the motion to amend first. So just voting on whether to change the original motion to forty-nine instead of forty-seven. So that would require two votes. You vote on whether to change it, and then vote on whether to pass it. If there's a friendly amendment, saying, "Can we change that to forty-nine?", then you only have to vote on your original motion. So it keeps things clearer for the clerk, and makes things move twice as fast.
Kit, other question. There's a phrase here, "Motion is stated." Does that mean, does that mean the time the chair, after discussion, state, restates the question?
No, before the motion is put.
Okay, well, if that's the case. A friendly amendment can only be made before the motion is stated, but the maker of the motion must, well, there is no maker of the motion.
We have a special rule.
Huh?
We, our board has a special rule for friendly amendments.
Okay, I know, but I'm just reading that.
So the way, the way Robert's Rules has it, is Commissioner O'Point moves to give facilities forty-seven thousand dollars. Commissioner O'Point seconds it before the chairperson states.
Okay, after I, after it's seconded, and he restates it.
Yeah.
Before debate.
So.
Okay, I, okay, I'm fine.
But yes, the board county commissioners does have a special rule, which largely follows Robert's Rules, but is different here.
Kit, if the chair misheard the motion, someone says, "I move we buy green plates." The chair says, "We have a motion to buy blue plates." Which motion is the actual official motion?
Still the, the main motion made by the commissioner.
Is it motion made or motion put?
As far as the effect later. So say, say they, none of the commissioners hear you, and so they're all voting on green plates. So then, the question is, are we buying blue plates or red plates?
Yeah.
Green and red.
Good question, that's a good question.
I would call it point of order one.
But if nobody does, and then after the meeting, you're like, "Well, what color did we vote on?"
Yeah, you're gonna have a confused clerk, and it's. I don't really need to worry. There's a common confusion between these two motions, laying on the table and postponing. They're sort of used interchangeably. Robert's Rules does have them as different. They must be made when the maker has the floor, and they require a second. But one is debatable, one is not, both pass through a majority vote. The main difference, not necessarily debatable, I suppose that somebody who's a stickler on technicalities could catch this and say, "We need to stop debate right now, because you said lay on the table, not postpone." But the main effect is whether it's properly taken off the table at the next meeting. If you make a motion to lay on the table, to lay an issue on the table, it's supposed to be taken up at the next meeting. Whereas postpone is just whenever it gets put on the agenda. Again, these are, these are about the definition of procedural issues, so if your practice is to always say, "Lay on the table," instead of postpone, you're not really creating any problems for yourself, you're just not giving it away. Motion to reconsider must be made by a person who is on the prevailing side, is debatable, does require a second. This is a way to change something that was previously adopted. First, you make a motion first, or is it, yes?
Does, does the second have to be from the prevailing side as well?
I don't believe so. I don't believe so. Everything I've seen is that the maker has to be on the prevailing side. So I think you, and that, that actually fits, because you think about a scenario where there was a four to three vote. One person changing their vote is gonna be enough. And if it required a second, switch votes to, you'd need two people to change the line. When, in effect, you really only need one, because that's gonna switch four to three. But I would guess that it's only the.
Do you have to reconsider the motion during the session, or which motion was made? Or can you do it at a subsequent meeting?
I believe Robert's Rules says the next one is fine.
Or the next?
Only the next meeting. Only the meeting where it occurred, or the next meeting. I believe is how Robert's Rule has it. Robert's Rules might say only the meeting where the action is taken. It's one of those two, and after the subsequent meeting is clearly a motion to rescind.
Do we have a special rule in that too, that's not the same as Robert's?
I think our motion to reconsider is the same meeting, is that right? And after that is motion to reconsider. So if it's brought, first vote on whether to reconsider the motion, and then vote on the main motion. So there's debate two times, so debate on whether to reconsider, and then debate on the original action again. According to Robert's Rules, it's the same meeting, one following the. According to Robert's rules, it's the same meeting, one following the next meeting. Your board rules can differ, and if your board rules do differ, then they will trump Robert's rules. Motion to rescind requires prior notice if it's going to pass through a majority versus a two-thirds. If there's not prior notice, if it comes up somewhat out of the blue, then two-thirds vote. And Robert's rules does specify this prior notice. Our board rules, we do have a motion to rescind, and the board rules would specify as what prior notice is. So it's going to be prior notice of some degree, likely a week or more before the meeting, saying, I'd like to undo what we did a year ago, 10 years ago, last week, whatever. So things can't be rescinded, something that's impossible to undo, so that makes sense. Something that might come up too is, not necessarily impossibility, but if there's been a legal effect. So in order to remove somebody from office that's actually in place, there's a separate procedure. So you can't rescind if there's a separate procedure until you've moved on. And when a resignation has been accepted or a member has been excelled, so. According to Robert's rules.
Kit, can I ask one last question?
Yes.
A few times in my experience, we, we've wound up not having a second to a motion. I don't know how it happened, and it hasn't happened in a long time. And I believe that Chris, when he was civil counsel, directed us to go back and have it ratified and somehow ask for a second. Is that how it would, I'm trying to remember this in case it ever happens again, it shouldn't, but how would that, how would that play out?
The reason that there wasn't a second was because things just kind of moved too quickly?
Yes.
And people just forgot, is there a second? It wasn't because there was no interest in second.
No, it wasn't because of that.
Yeah.
Or we didn't get the name, or it wasn't, we couldn't even get it from the recording, or, you know. I don't remember exactly what substance it started.
You could look at it as, well, clearly there were people that supported it to second it, that were majority voted for it. So what problem is there? That would be one way to look at it is, clearly there was a majority, so we're going to have the legal justification we need to take the action to it. Ratifying it makes it so there was no procedural violation, or that any procedural violation is fixed.
Right, okay.
But if the motion passed, there was only a procedural violation, there was no substantive violation.
Right, so it could stand and it'd be fine without all the radication?
Yeah.
Okay.
But reenacting it, rehoning it, makes it so that any procedural violation is gone anyways.
Okay, good, thank you.
I threw this in there because there was an issue not long ago. Not about campaigns of anybody running for office, but what happened was a public body was denouncing, promoting or denouncing a millage and using public dollars to do that. And that is not okay. So if Central Dispatch wants another millage, or the Commissioner on Aging wants a millage to pass, they can't use their public funds, they can't use their budget to support it. They can do flyers and such that supplies the public with information, and the common they do is, this is what you're actually voting on. But not saying, we need this money to do this, that can't come through the public with dollars. So it's a pretty simple rule, supplying information as opposed to promoting or denouncing something. In my mind, that's the only thing you really need to be aware of, probably the basics of it.
Would that include stating a personal opinion at an open meeting? Commissioner reports, I support this, we really need this?
I don't see any problem with that, I don't see any expenditure of money.
Okay.
Conflict of interest? This has been brushed on in years past, but it's about time to go into it in a little bit more detail. So the current parameters that exist, the county does have a code of ethics policy. So for those of you that are part of committees or subcommittees of the county, there is an ethics policy. For those of you that are part of townships, there is likely a code of ethics for that township as well, the city has one. They all prohibit different things, there are some pretty common ones that are part. So our code of ethics policy does apply to county employees and officials, so this is going to apply to members of the library board or Michigan, things like that, boards like that. This will be updated in the future likely. But as it stands right now, it does apply to committees, members of committees and subcommittees, as well as employees, and it prohibits gifts. Disclosure of confidential information that you learned through your employment or official position. May not use your property, the county property, for personal benefit. If you have investments that cannot be in conflict with your public responsibilities, you can't represent your personal opinion in that county. So that is, in the current policy, there's not a specificity that's tied to it, as, for example, saying, right now I am speaking as Kit Follin, not as an assistant prosecutor. There's no requirement of that at this time. But it is clear that that does exist, and there is, there's importance to that as well in that if it's clear that you're representing your personal opinion, the county cannot take adverse action against you because those are your first amendment rights, you have the right to express your personal opinion. Those are the current parameters in the county's ethics policy. There is also a Robert's rules of order, where that document says about, not with interest, says that a member should not vote, so it is discretionary with that number, that they should not vote when they have a direct personal or pecuniary interest, which is different than everybody else. Robert's rules does not define what a direct personal or pecuniary interest, does not define direct, does not define personal, does not define pecuniary. So it leaves it very discretionary and a bit vague as well on when people should not vote. There is existing state law which provides some parameters to when somebody must abstain from voting or discussing. And what those are, are public servants who enter into contracts with the entities they serve, public offices that are not compatible, and then the criminal laws of the state, which criminal laws are really little more than just ethics policies for everybody in the state. And different entities who have specific provisions, so for example, the Commission on Aging, they do have specific conflict of interest rules that apply to them. I broke down another one. Building officials and officials within the executive department of the state, there are specific conflict of interest rules for each of those bodies as well. But county commissioners, for example, there is not a specific conflict of interest rule for them. And that's the way it is for most county employees, members of committees and subcommittees, there is not a specific, specific guidelines for people in those spots. The contracts of public service with public entities, full-time employees are totally prohibited from entering into contracts with the entities they serve. Part-time employees are allowed to enter into contracts. Part-time employees are defined as 25 hours a week or less, that includes county commissioners.
Some of you are fewer.
Part-time employees.
Or fewer?
Yeah. But full-time employees are just simply not allowed to enter into contracts. So an example that's been fleshed out is if the county clerk also owns a lines company, the county can't buy lines. And that's, that's state law. The county also has a supplementary employment policy, where the county clerk quite possibly couldn't own one of those as well. So for the part-time employees, in order to enter into a contract with the public entity they serve, they have to give prior notice of that conflict, generally is supposed to be in writing at least a week before the question will be voted on, whether to approve the contract. That conflicted member cannot vote on whether to approve that contract, and that contract must pass with the support of two-thirds of the remaining members. So when the seven member board of county commissioners, four of six have to vote to approve that one member's contract with the county. The specifics of that contract have to be shown in the minutes, because prior notice has to have the specifics of the contract, which then get reflected in the minutes. So the specifics being exactly how much money is going to be given to that contractor, whether any public resources are going to be used, the extent or duration of that contract. There are several things, that, that pretty much covers what has to be in there. But then that has to get shown in the minutes so that if anybody wants to challenge it, they can. Incompatible public offices does not actually come up all that much. There's general rules, if you are going to be subordinating yourself, that's not okay. And what it needs to agree to- There are several opinions out there from the Attorney General on what will constitute incompatible public offices. A county commissioner and a township trustee is incompatible, can't be both at the same time. Could not be a county prosecutor and a county commissioner, generally can't be like a county clerk and a city commissioner. So those are all fleshed out, but those don't actually come up very often. One did come up recently, if you want to be part of, say, a district body and then also a more local body, that would be incompatible as well. So like a district library member, a member library, a district library board member and a member library, board member would be incompatible. Because they're sharing funding and you can't subordinate yourself. So in addition to the existing state law, Robert's rules of order and the code of ethics policy, there are two cases out of the 13th Circuit Court which quite possibly give, well, they really give at the same time the clearest and most vague guidance we have on what conflict of interest is going to be a problem. Which is unfortunate, it's, it's going to be the most commonly, it's going to be the most common law that we need to discuss, probably. Because incompatibility of offices comes up pretty rarely. When somebody's contracting with an entity that they serve, it's going to be so clear that everybody knows it's an issue. The code of ethics, maybe that gives the local case law a run for its money on how often it's applicable. But honestly, in my six years of generalized experience, and then the last couple of months of more focused experience, the code of ethics doesn't come up all that much as applicable. But this local case law is going to be frequently something that should be considered with the rough guidelines that it gives on when you should have seen from voting or discussing. What happened, there were two cases that were decided by former Judge Rogers of the Circuit Court. The first was this Garfield Township case, this related to the building of the mall back in 1990. It had dealt with the planning, the zoning and planning commissions with Garfield Township. There were zoning and environmental issues, I believe it was related to a parking lot of the mall. So there were some variances needed in order to develop the land for the parking lot. An environmental group and then a group of local residents that organized themselves as Garfield Neighborhood Watch filed a lawsuit challenging the granting of these permits and then a variance from the zoning regulations. The zoning board of appeals was eventually who created the challenged decision, was composed of five members. Two of those members had sold land to the mall's development ultimately, so. Okay, so two of the five members owned land that eventually became part of the mall. Two of the five members of the zoning board of appeals owned land in this little chunk of land. They sold land to a group who sold it to the developer, and it was all in a fairly short timeframe. So the concern was that these people on the zoning board of appeals were more likely to have granted the variance from zoning because they had sold land at an inflated value, because they knew that the mall would get what it wanted. So that's clear. But they had sold this land, in theory, at an inflated value because the person buying it knew it was going to be part of the mall. And they could know that the mall would get the variances it needed because they were on the zoning board of appeals. So it was a, a direct relationship, even though there was one intermediate step. There was one intermediate group that bought the land and then sold it into the mall. So then it was challenged by this Garfield Neighborhood Watch and a local environmental group. And they challenged whether there was a conflict of interest of these two zoning board of appeals members, because they had sold land that ultimately went into the mall. The Judge Rogers found that there was not a conflict of interest because at the time they had sold the property, the mall, they hadn't granted the variance or the permits for the mall. So whether the mall got approved or not, they were getting paid for their land, because they didn't sell it directly to the mall. He said that there was no conflict of interest. What he began to discuss then was appearance of impropriety, which is a legal standard that's present in many other places. Judges need to avoid the appearance of impropriety. And then prosecutors also need to avoid the appearance of impropriety in taking on cases where they may have already displayed a judgment of the merits, or if they know a party to the case. Judges especially are supposed to recuse themselves if there's even the appearance that they could be biased or that something's improper. That had also been discussed in other, other states where there appeared to be improper action even if there was no conflict of interest. In other states, there had been invalidation of township actions due to impropriety. So he took that into account. The Constitution in Michigan provides protections of fairness and due process. And if there are bad dealings going on in government, that violates people's due process rights. This Garfield Neighborhood Watch was concerned about their property values and their ability to enjoy their property, the commercial development next to them. So there's a constitutional protection for due process, that everything should be conducted fairly. And eventually reached the conclusion that this should apply, or that there was enough support in the Constitution to apply this principle to local government actions. So the guidance that can be gleaned from that is that it's not a speculative issue. You don't speculate whether there was too close of a relationship between a board and the people in front of that board. It needs to be direct, not looking for remote ties between them. In this case, there was a two-step process and it was a fairly short timeframe. Looking at actual facts, which reasonably calls into question the impartiality of the board. The outcome, actually, he did not invalidate the action of approving these variances from zoning and the permits that were granted. Because the zoning board of appeals voted unanimously, five to zero to approve that. So even without the two votes, the people who had close deals with the developer, there was still three out of five, so there was still a majority and it still passed. So that case just sort of lingered for about 11 years until another case came in front of Judge Rogers. And this was a development in Enbow Township, just across the county line, still applicable to Grand Travers.
Kit?
Yes.
So the decision on that previous case you were talking about was to proceed because there was a five to zero vote?
Yes, not because nothing appeared a problem, it was because there was a five to zero vote.
But the fact that these two individuals, we had suspicions at conflict of interest, they participated in the debate?
There was, he did note that they had not participated- There was, he did note that they had not participated vociferously. So in this case, there, there was that difference. And so, there were some important differences in this case, which did lead to invalidation of what Elmwood Township did. So in this case, there was no evidence that those two had swayed the other three. And so that allowed the permits and variance to stand. This was actually quite a biblical marathon case, and it went on for years. And ultimately, this is a sixty-some page written decision, which is incredibly compelling out of the circuit court. But this, this Elmwood Township case is also out of the 13th Circuit Court, so it is governing law for Grand Drivers County because we are in the 13th Circuit. The facts of that case was again, a developer who had purchased some land and was planning on developing it. This nonprofit group, Elmwood Citizens for Sensible Growth, challenged the approval of this condominium development and then the various permits that had to be granted to go along with it. The approval passed at the Elmwood Township Planning Commission by a four to three vote. One of those members had during, while the permits process was ongoing, so as the developer is in front of the planning commission, purchased property from the developer for under the list price of that, of that property. And it was actually adjacent to the development. So, you've got parcel A, which is where the development will be, you've got parcel B, and this person on the planning commission bought parcel B at less than list value. Unclear whether it was actually less than its fair market value, but it was less than the list value, which gave the appearance and created concerns that he'd gotten a gift. That it was listed at a hundred thousand and he bought it for seventy, so were you given a gift of thirty thousand dollars to increase the skids at the planning commission? There was no real indication either way whether he'd been given a gift. There was discussion of assessed value, list value, fair market value, and it's quite possible he truly didn't get any sort of benefit buying it under the list value. But there was the appearance and there was certainly a concern of that. That planning commissioner did disclose partially. The commissioner disclosed while this was ongoing, "I have purchased land adjacent to the development from the developer," but did not disclose very much in addition to that. Didn't disclose whether they'd met, discussed the proper amount, didn't disclose the amount even. But ultimately, that didn't matter whether he had disclosed because the appearance remained the same. He bought property while in an ongoing proceeding from that person that was before the board, that's something that made it appear a little bit fishy. That commissioner, and the difference, one of the main differences between these two cases is that it ended up being a four to three vote, whether to approve several of these permits for the developer. And that, so he was the tiebreaker in vote, and he had argued quite vociferously and strenuously to get the other three to join him. So he had a four to three vote with this one person who looked like he was involved in the dealing and had given a benefit. The property value also was clearly going to increase if the development was approved because it would be adjacent to a large development, so the property value was going to increase. So the outcome was that the action of the planning commission was invalidated, the permits were invalidated, it went back to square one for the developer. I'm sure they lost out a lot of money in all the permitting process and development, planned development that gone through. So, a significant outcome and significant effect for the parties that the citizens were happy. The township was probably embarrassed and the developer was probably really unhappy with all the money they invested for nothing, the money and time. These cases do not proceed quickly. Judge Rogers said that because he should have recused himself and because there was potential that he dissuaded other people, that that, that action just simply couldn't stand. That there was too much of an appearance of improper things that had been done. What effect that had on, those are the only two cases that we have that would provide guidance for when a conflict of interest is going to invalidate some type of action taken by your board, committee, or commission. So the effect of it is, it would be difficult to argue in court if you were sued to invalidate an action that you took. You've got two cases now, both out of our circuit, which are, they're actually very persuasive. They're different than many cases and they're not clearly grounded in a different court of appeals case or a statute, but they are very persuasive in their argument that there should be this doctrine. They cement its existence, it would be difficult to argue against it. It cements that an actual conflict is not really the standard, it's simply the appearance of that conflict that can invalidate an action. In this case, there was no requirement that they actually show that he'd gotten this major gift from the developer by approving what the fair market value of it was. But simply that he'd gotten it and made it enough with an appearance. It shows that you can't disclose away the problem. The planning commissioner had actually disclosed that while this has been ongoing, I've been in negotiations and I have purchased this plot of land right next to the development. So you can't disclose your way out of the problem. But what it also does is it shows that it's, what's called a fact-sensitive inquiry, which means the judge is not just going to say, "Well, this looks bad, and so therefore it is bad." There was, again, it's a very long written decision, looking at the actual facts, the list value, market value, actual value, fair market value. And so there was discussion of each of those things. There was, so he's looking at actual facts that would reasonably call into question the impartiality of the decision. It's not a minor thing. The judge is not looking at a minor problem, was not looking at, I don't know, at somebody's opinion that this may really looks bad. He's looking at actual facts with a significant amount of money, which truly appears problematic. So, did it actually attain the proceeding? And in this case, he was confident that it did and that it attained the proceeding because it was a four to three vote with this person in the majority and he had actually tried to persuade the rest of the group as well. As far as application of that, it's difficult to apply to any given precise situation. Like I said, it's probably the clearest and the vaguest guidance so yet because it so clearly applies. It's what everybody thinks of when they think of conflict of interest, they think, "Does this look bad?" Sorry to go long, thank you for coming, guys. It so clearly applies because it's phrased in vague language. Is there an appearance of an impropriety based on actual facts that teach the proceeding? So there are actual facts which reasonably call into question the impartiality of the outcome. And so that's the guidance that there is to apply. And myriad of situations are going to come up where you'll need to question this. But those are, those are very big standards to be applying to, "Well, my, my company did some business with this company ten years ago and it didn't go well." That doesn't really seem like something that would reasonably call into question whether they were impartial, but somebody could consider that, that would be something worth considering if they could really hold a grudge because they didn't pay you or because you really feel like you got a bad product. And if you're the deciding vote, that, that's something that at least would be something to consider. The last topic that I want to talk about is appointment and removal from office. For people that were, I guess one last thing on this. Cities and townships generally have their own codes of ethics, but these cases are still going to be applicable to cities and townships and commissions and boards. It's applicable to everybody in the circuit, which is all of the time. The process for appointment to boards in the, it's spelled out in the county's bylaws, that the county will create ad hoc committees, give a more in-depth review to the applications, do the interviews, and then make recommendations when the full board accepts or rejects the recommendations. Removal is, two more slides. Removal can either be by the governor, and this applies to city, village, and county elected officials, such as sheriffs, county commissioners, prosecutors, clerks, treasurers. And it actually says shall. So this is a, this is an interesting one that is in conflict with what many people would think is, the governor shall remove, say the clerk gets convicted of drunk driving. It's actually mandatory, there's a petition for the governor, the governor shall remove that elected official because they were convicted of being drunk. Or felony, or any of these other things, habitual drunkenness. So, with being drunk or a felony, has to be an actual criminal conviction. And there is ongoing in Jackson County right now. The mayor of the city of Jackson was trying to get the sheriff removed by the governor for official misconduct is the request. It has to be one of these bases, the governor cannot remove somebody, remove an elected official unless it's one of these bases. And official misconduct, the sheriff down there has said some really inappropriate things. And so far, the governor is saying that that doesn't qualify as misconduct, it was words, not anything. But Jackson is really pushing, the mayor of Jackson is really pushing to have a declared misconduct to get the sheriff removed to Jackson County. So that is how elected officials can be removed. That and a recall are the only way that they can be removed.
Does this apply to elected officials of the city and county in the last few years?
It should, and for unknown reasons to me.
Okay.
I don't know why nobody petitioned the governor. I'm guessing it's lack of knowledge that this qualifies.
Okay.
Because the way I read this, there's no discretion, they should have been removed from office. Removal by the board of commissioners applies to people that are appointed by the board of commissioners, so that would apply to various department heads, people who are on commissions, and this is the sole manner of removal for people who are on the library board, the person on board, who have been appointed by the board of commissioners. So, either incompetence in the board's opinion, and there would have to be a finding that the person was incompetent to actually do the job, but it would not require charges and evidence, so it actually has to be a motion.
Just whatever I think.
Yep. But as far as official misconduct or habitual or locally neglected duty, there would have to be charges and evidence. And here, for the board of commissioners, people do have procedural rights, so if the board were to think that somebody has committed misconduct or had habitually or locally neglected their duty, they could be removed, but they would have the right to some procedure for the board of commissioners here. Any questions? Hold on.
Thank you.
Good. It's true timing, sorry that it went so long.
I think you're scheduled until four. I can't believe you're like, you know, cutting off your time.
Three hours.